Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It's February 6, 2018, time is 7:05. I had hoped that the first item on the agenda would be a discussion of the Super Bowl, but unfortunately, we're going to have to pass on that. So instead, the first item on the agenda is Riverstone LLC. This is a continuation from a prior hearing on January 25, 2018. The location is off Ward Street, which is map 124, lots 70 to 75 and 26. This is an application for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, as amended, to construct a 36-unit condominium development, including nine affordable units on approximately 6.7 acres of land located in Residence District B. The revised site plan dated December 20, 2017 depicts 32 units. Who do we have for the applicant this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Warren Baker. I'm counsel for the applicant, and with me is Brian Murphy, the principal.
Great. First item I'd like to accomplish this evening is to have the zoning administrator, Emily Wetworth, review for us items that have been received into the public record since our last meeting.
Since January 25, these will just be organized by who we received the materials from. The applicant submitted, or materials submitted on his behalf, include correspondence from Attorney Baker dated February 1. It's a letter responding primarily to comments raised by Attorney DeLeese on behalf of Butters to the development during the January 25 hearing. We also received a revised plan set prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group, or MEG, with the latest revision date of February 2, 2018. Response to engineering peer review comments prepared by Susan Pratt, or excuse me, Spratt, the project manager with MEG dated February 2, 2018, and a preliminary hydrologic analysis, again, prepared by MEG with the latest revision date of February 2, 2018. Materials submitted by either representatives of the board or the town include a letter from Lonnie Fournier, the Senior Planner and Conservation Officer dated February 5. Supplemental civil peer review comments from Patrick Brennan of Amory Engineers, the Board Civil Engineer, dated today, February 6, as well as supplemental traffic peer review comments from Jeffrey Dirk of Vanessan Associates, also dated February 6 today. From Butters and members of the public, we received a letter from Bob Cosgrove, actually received that the day of the last hearing, but I don't believe it was noted on the record. He resides at 42 Ward Street. The letter is dated January 25, received January, excuse me, January 24th, received January 25. We received email correspondence from Michael Mercurio, 3 Howland Lane, dated January 31, which included forwarded comments from Bob Bluke, 21 Howard Lane, dated January 30. Email message from Scott and Lisa Peterson, High Street, dated January 31. Email comments dated February 1 from Lisa and Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle, questioning the location of their septic system on the project plans. A copy of an email message also from Lisa and Brad Taylor to the Board of Selectmen dated February 1. And then, just this evening, we received a letter from Robert and Anne Mullin of 18 Autumn Circle, and a letter from Lilla Johnson for Heather Lane. So I don't have copies of those, but can pass them down if needed.
Great. Okay, I'd like to begin with the applicant. If you may just review for us what you have submitted since the last meeting.
Thank you. As you know, the last Friday, well, last meeting, we had said that by Friday, we would be submitting additional information responses and certain plans. Those were submitted dated February 2 by McKenzie Engineering. Also, I think the board is aware that the engineer, our engineer, was available for this evening.
Yes.
And so therefore, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Chairman, what value it has. I mean, the commitment, the response is there. I think there's a lot of response issues that has gone by virtue of that one. What is better for the board? I mean, I would only read.
Please don't read.
Thank you. Okay, good. You and I both made him happy. But obviously, when he returns, that discussion is going to be well-held. The second issue is that at the last meeting, we had indicated that our traffic engineer would be available. Your traffic engineer was not, and so therefore, we said that on the 13th, we would be able to have both engineers for a substantive conversation. So that's it. The third issue that was requested was an issue of waivers, and although there was no indication that we were going to be submitting it by Friday because it was a task that needed a little bit more time to put it in the form that you wanted, we have actually met with the engineer, myself, and the applicant. We've gone through it. We're very close to being able to do an expanded, to try to address those questions, those issues or the outline, if you will, that you presented to us. It is my hope, okay, that that will be submitted by Friday.
By this coming Friday.
This coming Friday, yes.
Thank you.
Couple of days hence. I have not had a chance to review those documents, particularly the ones that were submitted today. I know that the concom I saw a little bit earlier, another letter, I've had 40 minutes to look at it, but substantive response, I really don't have at this point in time. So we're more than happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Do you have any experts with you who you want to present this evening in terms of additional material?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so, I just want to make sure I'm not missing. There are a number of issues and questions that the board has. I think before I turn to our questions, I was going to ask Pat Brennan to give a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. As was noted in the submittals that have been received since the last hearing, I reviewed the documents that were submitted last Friday on behalf of the applicant. Over the last few days, I reviewed those and submitted a letter today, mainly because I wanted to have talking points tonight that I could kind of review. So if you don't mind, I'll just go through, I think, the highlighted areas where we either still need information or there's some things that I think need to be worked out with the applicant's engineer. As Mr. Baker just mentioned, a revised waiver list we're still waiting for. One of the responses, and just to back up for a second, the last public hearing was on January 23. We had received revised materials dated, it was on the 25th, on the 23rd, we had received revised materials, and I kind of verbally kind of gave a brief report on those at that last hearing. This letter kind of, or this report just kind of updates that with where we are at this point in time. I can kind of say what's changed from those January 23 plans versus the February 2 plans as I go through this, just so you know where we're at.
Sure.
That January 23 response in terms of exterior lighting, their response was that light posts would be provided at each house equipped with a photosensitive cell to operate dusk to dawn, therefore, an exterior lighting plan with photometrics is not required. So that's their response to that, so that, assuming just they have driveway length, it's just what they're proposing based on that, that response. They had provided that night, and I did mention the size and calculations for the soil absorption system, for the septic system. Those size and calculations show that that, they have the room in the area that they have proposed to locate that system and the reserve area for that, which are the two requirements under Title V for the siting. One of my comments was about a number of retaining walls that are proposed that are over four feet in height, and they need a structural engineer to design those walls. What they've done on the most recent set of plans is shown a modular block retaining wall detail. That detail shows either a fence or a guardrail on top of the wall. There's one location where the retaining wall is adjacent to what they call Road B, and I asked that they put a guardrail on that wall so that any vehicular traffic wouldn't go over that wall. The fence is proposed on the other walls presumably, and that leads into my next comment, which was about a retaining wall that was behind units 24 through 26 in the property at 64 Ward Street. And that retaining wall, as I mentioned before, is 15 to 16 feet high at its highest. Again, they provided that detail, but again, it's only, it's within five feet of the property line, and it's proposed to retain the property from the 64 Ward Street property. With the sands and gravels I have out there, I doubt that wall can be constructed without material from that 64 Ward Street property falling down into the excavation. So the constructibility of that wall, I think, is problematic, and I also think that for the people that are living in the development, looking at a concrete 15-foot-high wall face is just, visually, it's not that pleasing. The other thing is the fence detail that they provided on top of the wall is set two feet back from the face of the wall. On a wall that's 15 feet high, I think it should be right out to the edge so that you can't have somebody walking along that two feet that could easily fall off. So that's just another safety concern for that particular wall. I reviewed the sidewalk situation at the last meeting. They have provided a two-foot-wide grass strip between the back of the Cape Cod berm and the proposed sidewalks. The proposed sidewalks are four feet wide. My recommendation was five feet, and I had mentioned the last time, four-foot-wide walk. People can't walk side by side or past one another without having to step off a four-foot-wide walk.
So you're concerned there's safety?
Yes.
Right.
I think I'll leave, my next comment was related to Mr. Dirk's comment about the roadway width being a minimum 24 feet wide, but I think I'll let him go into that at the next meeting with the traffic engineers. Going down the list a little bit under drainage and utilities, again, I discussed additional soil testing at the locations of the proposed subsurface infiltration systems. In the response letter that we received February 2, McKenzie Engineering stated that they believe there is sufficient soil data to support the design as proposed. Test pits had been excavated in close proximity to the subsurface infiltration systems, and the highest observed groundwater elevation at those locations was used to establish a four-foot separation of groundwater. Then they say additional location-specific soil testing will be performed in conjunction with development of final construction plans. I know that at least one of the test holes that I looked at, they didn't have the four-foot separation from groundwater, so I'm just kind of questioning that, and I think what I may do is ask McKenzie Engineering to put the groundwater elevations at those test hole locations on the plans, just to make it easy to see, all right, there's the groundwater. I mean, I did it by hand, but there's the groundwater elevation, there's the bottom of that infiltration system, and then you can see what that separation is. It's also, as I just read, they want to do the soil testing at the time of final construction plans. I believe that the testing at this point would be a safer course of action for the developer, because if the soil testing after a permit is issued with conditions, if that's the case, if it shows that there's higher groundwater or not the soil texture that they're expecting, those systems may need to be completely redesigned. So it's kind of a chance, if they don't want to do it this time, it's a chance that they're taking. There have been other projects, or I shouldn't say, there's been other times where there's been conditions for soil testing, but again, it's just, it's dangerous, in my view, to go that route, and it's for the developers' sake, not necessarily the towns'.
That's true, because they'll be back to say, oh, you didn't pass that test, now we got to do this.
Yeah, then you have to, because then it's not a minor change to the plans, it's that, at least I would consider a major change, which would open up another public hearing and everything. Piggybacking on that, some of the proposed infiltration system, they've redone some grading on the site with this new set of plans, so they're showing that they have adequate cover over these infiltration systems, and these are all for roof drainage. There's only one that they may not. It's under the proposed turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround for the fire department, and I'm just asking them to verify that that, whatever they have for load rating over that system is adequate, because the Hingham Fire Department, their heaviest piece of apparatus is 82,000 pounds, so they just have to make sure that whatever they have under that roadway is going to support that vehicle. And again, redesign of those systems may be required based on those, that soil testing. They did provide revised drainage calculations and a detail for an outlet control, proposed outlet control structure in the drainage basin on the eastern portion of the site. However, that structure was not modeled correctly in HydroCAD, so the results really, they have to model it correctly in order to actually give us the right results. Either that, or they'll have to change the detail to match the model so that the results are valid. So that's, it's a technical issue within the calculations that they need to, they need to look at for that. Getting back to the weight of the fire truck, as I mentioned before, some of the septic components in a portion of Leaching Field are under roadways, and they did provide, they did say that the Leaching Field is designed for H-20 loading, however, I believe that fire truck is greater than what's, what the H-20 load design vehicles are. It's heavier, so they have to just verify that they're going to be, if it's going to be under the roadways, that it's going to support that fire truck.
How do they do that verification for you?
The, there's a way to do it, both the manufacturer of whatever components they're using, they have, they typically have road tables based on depth of cover over those components, so they'll have to work with the manufacturers that they're specifying to get those, get that information to us. But it is something that's normally, it's pretty routine. Again, full septic design information, all they've provided so far is conceptual layout of the tanks, pump chamber, whatever they're having there, and the soil absorption system. They stated in their recent response that full septic system design plans will be submitted in conjunction with development of final construction plans, and again, without the full design, we can't determine whether a project will or will not comply with state and local regulations, both Title V and the supplemental border health regulations. And those are some of the waivers that they need to ask for if they're not going to comply, so we kind of need to know a little bit more information if they need waivers or not.
So let me just see if I understand it. What you're saying is that unless we know how the septic system is designed, we won't know if a waiver of the local rules is necessary?
That's correct.
Right.
And even Title V, that they may, right now, the sizing of the soil absorption system will meet Title V, but there's other components that need to be designed in compliance with Title V, and that's the state regulations, not the local.
Right, right.
So that was a review of the comments that I had gone over last time. I have some new comments based on the new information, and the first one is that the, as I mentioned, they did some revised revisions to the grading on site. One of those revisions shows that the roadway profiles, previously, you come up Viking Lane, there was going to be a crest in the road, and it was going to go down to a low point right where the property line is before you get into the Autumn Circle properties. That low point, they had a pair of catch basins there, so that all runoff from the end of Autumn Lane and from Viking Lane would be captured in those catch basins. The revised profile and grading show those catch basins are still there, but they show the low point about 95 feet beyond that, pretty much at the intersection of where the asphalt would meet the existing Autumn Circle cul-de-sac asphalt, and no provision for drainage in that location. So they need to change that profile so that the low point is at their property where they're collecting the stormwater.
And so the implication is if they-
The implication is, we heard in previous hearings, that the drainage in Autumn Lane surcharges currently, and if they're going to introduce a new 100-feet of roadway roughly, that they're not mitigating the stormwater, that's that much more impervious surface that's going to that Autumn Lane stormwater system. The other thing that I noticed in the HydroCAD calculations is that the post-development volume of stormwater runoff will be increased to the wetland area at each side, east side of the development. The calculations are showing that they can meet the rate of runoff, they can mitigate that, but not the volume. The calculations also show that the ponding during the various storm events in that wetland will not increase under post-development conditions, but I think there's an issue with how they have modeled the outlet from that wetland. They modeled it as 120-foot-long by 10-foot-wide weir. I don't think there's 120-foot-long by 10-foot-wide weir out there. I think they really need to model whatever the shape of that outlet from that wetland is, so that we know whether that ponding elevation is going to be higher than proposed conditions, because volume, if you have an increase in volume, it should tell you that you're going to have an increase in elevation during flood events.
And then what does it mean that there's an increase in elevation?
So say today, the calculations right now show 100-year flood, say it's at 56.08 elevation. That's what the proposed and the existing shows. However, if that outlet's not modeled correctly, with about 60% additional volume is what we're talking about on the order of, that could, depending on the size of the wetland, if it's a one-acre wetland, and that's a half an acre foot, that's six inches of additional flooding in that wetland. So it's tied into the size of the wetland and the amount of the volume increase, because that wetland can only hold so much water, and the outlet from that wetland has to be modeled correctly in order for us to tell how much water will be ponding in that wetland. I went on the Hingham Online GIS today, and they show that there's a private well at 38 Ward Street. It doesn't specify whether that well is a potable well or non-potable, but 38 Ward Street, at least a portion of that property is within 100 feet of their proposed soil absorption system. Title V requires a minimum of 100 feet between a soil absorption system and a potable well. Your supplemental regs require 250 feet between a soil absorption system and a potable well and 100 feet to a non-potable well, such as an irrigation well. So I'm asking that they locate that well shown on the plans and, you know, find out whether it's potable, non-potable, if it's even still there, it may not, it may not be there, but it shows up on the town's GIS, so, you know, it's an item of concern that could be an issue if it's within 100 feet of that proposed soil absorption system, because they don't really have much room to move that.
Right.
Then my last comment just gets back to the presentation that we made at the last meeting related to the wetland line shown on the current set of plans versus a wetland line that was shown on the approved subdivision plans, the two different lines, and my recommendation last time was that the applicant should have that line verified by the Conservation Commission so we know that the wetland line that we're working with is an approved wetland line with conservation.
Right.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Joe, if I may. Pat, I just have one question about the soil absorption system.
Yes.
As you know, we're right at 90 bedrooms.
Correct.
One additional bedroom, and it kicks us into a whole nother permitting scheme here.
Yes.
Do we have sufficient information on the soils at the soil absorption system site? Do we know, are these going to perk, or we got enough separation from the-
Yeah, the-
-separation from the-
-groundwater?
They do have- Do we need a mounding analysis for a system this size?
They do have four test holes within the footprint of the soil absorption system. They do show a sandy material with, I believe-
Right.
-two-minute per inch roughly perk rate. I can verify that for you. So it does show favorable soils. I'll have to double-check, I don't think they gave us a bottom elevation of that system, but I can kind of figure that out based on the topography, proposed topography on top of it-
Right.
...and the water table elevation based on the test holes, and I can-
Looking for the four-foot separation, right?
Uh, you may need, you may need five feet-
Maybe more.
-if it's less than two-minute per inch perk rate.
Right.
And I believe Hingham might even have a more stringent local regulation on that. But I'll double-check on that, and I'll get back to you on that.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions for Pat?
No, I agree with everything Pat says in all his comments, so, I don't, you know, 24-foot road widths, five-foot sidewalks with two-foot grass strips, you know, some, I think there's some bus stop areas needed. You know, they put in a P E design, they were going to use probably these prefabricated walls. You can get them that look nicer than another particular wall, so that's an architectural, that was a good, you know, so all his points, so I think that the applicant should go back to the drawing board and present something the town can, the town might be able to embrace. Because I mean, the way the plans are shown here, we've been doing this now for almost two, whatever it is, a year plus, and, you know, we've been talking 24-foot-wide roads, we've been talking about problems with septic systems, you know, the town was shocked when they came forward with this plan, so, you know, I just, I just want to see something change fast. I agree with all Vanessi's comments, so if there were conditions, all those, I would, I would have to have all those conditions in this, and that means that this plan doesn't work, so.
Thanks.
All right.
Just one thing on the roadway widths, I think we've been pretty consistent on the 24-foot-wide roadway, and that is a subdivision standard.
Right.
I believe we have the ability, even if no waivers are being requested from those subdivision regulations, that we do have the ability to refer back to those regulations when we review projects such as this.
Right.
Okay. We've had a number of hearings, and a number of issues have been identified, both by members of the board, by our experts, by members of the public, and I've asked Emily to prepare sort of a summary that we can go over as we tackle the issues, and just one by one, go through them, make sure that we've articulated them so the applicant understands and that we understand where we're at.
So I'll try not to be overly redundant with some of the comments that Pat just raised, but-
But include them, because they are-
We'll include them to the extent that I think, you know, the applicant may need to hear some direction from the board-
Right.
...in addition about particular issues. So the first group of items that maybe we could cover are, is the missing information that I think the board may still want to see. As mentioned by Pat, that we, and that the applicant has acknowledged, we await a complete and specific list of waiver requests from all local regulations. I would note that in addition to the specific waiver requests that, as Mr. Fisher has raised in the past, we need the list to indicate where on the plan relief is requested, so that we can, we can tie it to something specific, and there are some inaccuracies on the last list, so I just want to make the applicant aware that in addition to decks, any wall over six feet in height is considered a structure, so I think your last list suggested a 5.6-foot front yard setback and rear yard setback as a minimum, and I think instead, it's probably somewhere around two, two-and-a-half feet in particular areas. We can talk later about the desirability of that type of arrangement and whether that waiver would be due favorably by the board, but for now, we should at least get the list to be accurate.
Yep.
Now, if anybody wants to expand on the waiver list, or if we've covered that.
No, we've covered it, because this board, you know, has the responsibility to make sure that, to the extent waivers are being considered, that they are being considered in the most narrow of circumstances, and we will not be granting blanket waivers. So we need to make sure that we know exactly where the waiver is requested, in what circumstance, so that we can make sure that our decision is appropriately drafted.
And I will say that I'm available to read drafts of it, too, so- So we've done this on quite a few applications now, and so if you want to run things by staff, you know, we can let you know if you're missing some, or how to, you know, how to approach certain waiver requests. Building on that, as Pat covered, and as the board, the board also received written comments from the Executive Health Director last month suggesting that the applicant submit all those materials specified in the Board of Health supplementary rules and regulations for the disposal of sanitary sewage related to the onsite wastewater disposal system, so that the board can, I think it will help the applicant identify what relief they may or may not need, but so that we have a picture of how that's going to work.
To what extent is the information incomplete right now?
So the materials that the board identifies that they need cover four pages. I suspect quite a few of those are complete, but there may be areas where you don't have test holes in exactly the, you know, the same number or location as the rules specify. And so that's what, we just need you guys to go through that and make sure that we have enough information to go on. I don't know exactly how much is missing just yet. We also are looking for confirmation of the availability of potable water from Aquarian to serve the development, so I think that's been raised in the past, and the applicant may be working on that already. There's been-
Let me just stop. Is that something that you are working on?
My understanding from, excuse me, my understanding from speaking with the engineer is yes, he's working on that.
Right, thanks.
Want to turn back to the wetland line discrepancies in the exhibit that Pat showed at the last hearing, and note again that the Conservation Officer this week submitted a letter to this board recommending that it engage a wetland specialist to, excuse me, scientist, to confirm the most recent line shown on the plan. So we've provided the letter to the applicant and provided a handful of names that, you know, we just hope he might confirm whether or not there's a conflict or concern with any of those experts, and if the board is so inclined, we could engage a wetland scientist in the near term to do that.
My understanding is the applicant has not filed with the Hingham Conservation Commission, is that correct?
Correct.
So this board acts as the Conservation Commission in 40Bs if there's been no filing with the Conservation Commission.
With respect to the bylaw, yeah.
With respect to local, with respect to the local Hingham bylaw. And so we have a responsibility to delineate the line. Right now, we don't have that in place, so we need to engage a specialist, a wetland specialist who will confirm the line or assist in the delineation. What is the cost associated with that?
The estimated cost, in a very conservative estimate, would be $1,500. We don't anticipate that it would be that much, but not to exceed $1,500.
Has a request been made of the applicant for those funds?
No, not yet, just a, we haven't received a response yet to our request to confirm there's no conflict with the three professionals that we had shared. So there's been no specific dollar amount requested yet.
So given our schedule, we need to make that request?
We would like $1,500.
We have real estate counsel here. Susan, is this something that needs to be in the form of a motion, or is it just a request that the board would make to get appropriate funding?
The regulations provide for there to be a cooperative discussion about it, but if it's not, then the board can just say that it's going to be-
So these are the regulations of the Conservation Commission?
No, 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 sorry, this is the 40B-
The 40B regulations, but they- Right, but the work that we're looking to have done is consistent with what the Conservation Commission would do?
Yes, that's my understanding, based on the Conservation Officer's-
And I reviewed the Conservation Commission bylaws. We have two folks up here who have served on the Conservation Commission. Mario was my mentor.
Thank you, Joe.
And a third who's done 30 years of wetlands permitting, but I just want to raise, just want to raise one issue with timing-
Yep.
...and the current season.
Yes.
It's often difficult to accurately delineate wetlands this time of year. If there's snow cover, it's very difficult. But vegetation is-
Not out yet.
The vegetation's kind of-
Not out yet.
It's not out, right?
That's right.
So, just with that caveat. Mid-March is generally accepted as a time when you can more accurately flag these wetlands.
Given our time, we may have to ask Mother Nature to cooperate with us instead of the other way around.
Supposed to be rain tomorrow, so.
Yes. But we need to proceed. So I would ask that, Emily, you continue your discussions with the applicant, and by the end of this week, there'd be a request for funding for a wetland specialist, so we can proceed with the delineation. And if there is any disagreement in terms of the availability of the specialist, we should bring it up at the next meeting, so we can get that handled.
I just want to say for the record, that it's not just the discrepancy between these plans, which date back 15, 16 years, but I think it's the proximity of several of these buildings to the wetland line as shown on the plans. I think it's incumbent on us to verify that that's the accurate line, because they're definitely within the 20-foot notice or setback, so.
I just, to clarify, the board's rules may provide, and I believe they do, this underling from the 40B regulations, state regulations, the board's rules, so zoning board's rules, may provide that if the applicant fails to pay the review fee within a stated period of time, the board may deny a comprehensive permit. So I think it should just be clear when you need the fee by, so that there's no ambiguity for compliance with the regulations.
Should we be establishing that time now? Yeah, I think, given our schedule, we need to do that. So I would say, what would be the typical time required to engage the wetland specialist?
I'll probably need a couple of days to solicit quotes and then select one of the specialists. But I would think, you know, if the applicant has the funds in hand, and we don't award the contract until the funds are here, he can bring the money in by the end of the week, and we can also make a decision, ideally by the end of the week.
Okay, so that would be by February 9th, which is Friday?
Yeah, and-
I think that's a short day for you, I know.
Well, I'm actually not in the office on Friday, so if it could be by the close business on Thursday, that would be ideal.
Which is the 8th.
Mm-hmm.
And that request should be put in writing?
Yep.
Okay.
In the morning, sure.
Okay, move on from the wetland line.
There's been some discussion about a request for a photometric plan. I don't believe there's been an identified waiver to date from the site plan review requirement to submit a photometric plan, but we did have a response from MEG that they intend to put posts in, you know, in front of each house, but it doesn't appear that there will be a photometric plan provided. I didn't know if the board wanted to provide the applicant with some guidance on that issue, particularly because of the proximity of the proposed units to abutting properties. And I would imagine that there would be more exterior lighting than just a post for the future residents of the development as well.
Yeah, I would be concerned about things like exterior floodlights on the rear of the building, particularly the units that back onto Ward Street. I mean, is that going to interfere with sightlines of traffic on Ward Street, or is it going to spill over into budding properties, that sort of thing, so.
Thoughts on that?
I think we should be requiring the photometric plan. I think the impact, both in terms of traffic safety as well as neighbors, and-
Yeah, I mean, I agree it should be done. Their answer was they were going to use driveway lights, so. Didn't Mr. Brennan say that their answer was they were going to use the driveway lights?
Light posts will be provided at every house equipped with a photosensitive cell to operate dusk till dawn.
Right, so we would do the survey, have them do the survey on that.
Yep.
And that will be the extent of the lighting?
If that's all they're proposing, yes, but I think the applicant should consider whether-
It will work?
...a light post for each house is sufficient, or if there should be lighting for the visitor parking areas, will there be exterior lighting on the rear of the properties?
Or the rear decks or anything like that?
Because if those aren't shown, then-
Because I'd be concerned with spillover onto adjacent properties or onto a street, so.
Right, and because there's a conflict, you have too much light spillover, you have not enough, you've got safety issues.
Right.
Or if you have the lights pointing in the wrong direction, you've got safety issues. So all those indicate that we should have a photometric plan, and we should make that a requirement of this application.
And then we did receive in the last round of revised plans, a preliminary landscaping plan. I would just note that there is minimal detail provided on those plans, so the species, size, height, number, et cetera, the symbols shown on that plan were not identified, and that's information we typically would receive.
Yeah, is there a code to the symbols there? Because I didn't see a code, and so it was difficult to understand.
The only, I don't know of the code, since I'm not an engineer who has the secret code, but I do understand that on the plan, there were some marked as deciduous or, you know, in terms of that. But I do, again, note back to the board that it is a preliminary plan. It is not a finalized detailed plan at all, was not intended to be.
Right.
I would suggest that if the board feels that the height, for example, if the height of tree or the type of tree, whether it's evergreen or not, is necessary in connection with setbacks, waters, that type of thing, then, and they are not going to provide it, then it may be something that the board may want to consider whether or not you want to condition, and will condition on the type, size, height of trees that would need to be provided.
And those are things that the board certainly can impose, but it's generally in the applicant's best interest to present what they would like to do, so that this board is not directing what type of tree you would use as a street tree.
I think in the absence of the applicant coming forward, we are going to have to impose the constraints.
Yes.
What's next after that?
That's what I have for missing information.
Right.
Then there are a number of, I guess, general design issues that the board might like to weigh in on. The first is sort of a general comment about the massing of the development, the proximity of the proposed buildings to both one another and to neighboring properties as well as the streets. So I think Mario had touched on this issue in general. It's something that the town has expressed concern about since the project eligibility stage. A lot of these concerns were embedded in the planning board's comment letter from last April, and I don't know that the applicant has fully responded to that concern. There's been a very modest reduction in the overall number of units, but not really a perceivable change in the general density of the development. And so I don't know if the other members of the board want to weigh in on that kind of issue.
I note, I'm just looking through the proposed site layout plan here, and I guess the minimum distance between the buildings here, unit 15 and 16, for example, nine feet. I recall nine and a half feet, I think, from the original plan. I don't know if that's exactly right, but it was, I believe it was. We've got a 12 feet here. Yeah, they're pretty close, they're pretty close. And also the proximity to, you know, the sidewalk on Ward Street, along the north side of Ward Street. It's not, I guess we could scale this off, it's no, is this five feet, seven inches or something? I can't really read this number here, but very, very close, so. It's close, it's still a dense development. Nine feet between buildings, and that doesn't, I'm not sure if that counts. No, that does count the deck, so it's nine feet between a rear deck and the next, and the sidewall of the adjacent building. That's pretty close, I could probably stand there and stretch out my arms and almost touch, so.
All right.
Agree.
You know, we've heard, we've heard from neighbors, we've heard from members of the public, that this is massive, that it's not appropriate for the community. We've heard the proximity to neighbors is just incredibly close, and it's intrusive, and it's not consistent with the kind of environment and neighborhoods that we want to have in Hingham. And I think this board echoes those concerns. The massing is absolutely inappropriate, and it's, and the impact on the community is exacerbated by the proximity of these large, of the massive structures to neighbors. So these design issues are of concern to the board, and those are things that I think we're going to try to address as we pursue this project.
Right.
So that we don't appear overly negative, I will acknowledge that the applicant chose in, you know, the revised plan from late December to include a single-family home specification, so that typology is more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Some of the other design features, like sloped roofs and clavered siding, seem generally consistent with the neighborhood. I would say that, you know, in one particular comment, that the orientation of several of the buildings does not seem consistent with the neighborhood, and having rear facades and decks within five feet of the Ward Street layout doesn't seem appropriate. And I'd ask the applicant to consider, even if access, vehicular access to those units remains interior to the site, to at least have a front facade facing Ward Street.
Are you saying that the streetscape might not be as attractive as you'd like?
I don't think it's consistent with what's there, yeah, nor do I feel that it's attractive the way it's presently designed. In terms of setbacks, we've heard comments about the proximity of the proposed structures to wetland resource areas, and it seems like it may be particularly important because the surrounding neighborhood has experienced periodic flooding. And so, as you've discussed previously, verifying the wetland line is important, but the applicant also should potentially consider increasing the setback to the onsite resource areas to the extent possible. I think I've heard that from-
Yes.
...members of the board. In a similar vein, there appears to be a lack of open space and recreational amenities on the site. In other recent 40B developments, the board has asked the applicant to consider including a playground or other recreational amenities for residents of the development. And so the sidewalks were a step in that direction, but it seems like more could be done.
What are the recreational amenities that are being proposed?
Excuse me, I believe the plan provides only for open space. I'm unaware that there are any playgrounds or other kinds of facilities proposed.
So I didn't miss it, it's not there. And in terms of the open space, there seems to be not a lot, and particularly for- And in terms of the open space, there seems to be, not a lot, and particularly for, for the denseness of the community, it's, it's, it's a problem, and it's, again, it's not consistent with, with what we'd be looking for, for Hingham. Recreational amenities, this is going to be a community, and so, we need to have appropriate recreational amenities available to residents, and that is something that we would be looking for.
Can we talk about the Autumn Circle?
We're going to, we're going to get to that.
Oh, okay.
I just note that there appears to be significant grade changes, or regrading on the site, so the applicant doesn't seem to be working with the existing topography. As a result, we have the significant retaining walls that they've proposed, and I, I think, you know, the board may want to talk about some of the issues that Pat raised, about the safety, constructability, aesthetics of particular walls. I mean, for the future resident of, is it Unit 21 or 25, that's facing a 15-foot-tall retaining wall, they're just not going to get any light or air in their unit, and I just don't know that it's conducive to livability for, for even the future residents of this development.
In terms of the safety issues for the wall, Pat, you've covered them, covered the issues before, do you see any additional improvements that we should be asking for?
Well, in terms of the safety, it's mostly because of the height of the wall, and the fear of somebody falling off, you know, a child playing in that area and falling off the wall. Aside from fencing and somehow trying to keep them off, but, I mean, kids are going to be kids, they're going to go around fences, so it's, it's just a safety concern with walls of that height, because there is the 15-foot-high one, the one right along Ward Street gets up to as high as eight feet high, so there's some high walls out there.
And, and Pat, do you remember from the, from the face of the wall, how much room went to the property line again?
The face of the wall on...
Do they have enough room to do like a cofferdam, soldier piles, and that's going to be an expensive wall?
From the property, for the high wall, from the property line to the face of wall, you're looking at seven feet? So it's not... The, the wall right along Ward Street, I believe, is almost right on the right-of-way line. Yeah, it's within, within a couple of feet of the right-of-way line.
If you can do it, it's just special construction.
Yeah.
You can't just dig it out, it's going to be into the other people's property.
The only way I could see them constructing that 15-foot-high wall would be to drive sheeting behind it, to retain that earth while they're constructing the wall, and then removing the sheeting. Otherwise, you're going to have, like I said, the material from that 64 Ward Street property is just going to fall right onto the site as they activate behind it, or in front of it. Especially with the sandy gravelly material, when you walk out there, you can see how sandy and gravelly it is on the side of that hill. There's some existing pine trees there that are, you know, undercut, there's roots hanging out, so there's, I don't, I just don't see how they're going to construct it. And if they, if they need to drive sheeting to construct it, that's a lot of money.
What about the look, the aesthetics?
Well, I think somebody mentioned that they have the modular blocks, they're concrete blocks, but they do texture them to look more like a stone. I guess it's just preference on whether you think that looks nice or not.
Right.
And in a residential application, I thought I heard you saying that that would imply...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's less money, but I would be, I would like, like in Wamuth, Route 18, they're doing walls, you structural concrete, and then you've put a stone face on it.
Related to the grading changes, I, there doesn't appear to be on the record, sort of a cut-and-fill analysis, how much material may be leaving the site, if material is leaving the site, where it may be going, this kind of ties back in part to the waiver list, because there are regulations that would prohibit earth material from leaving the Town of Hingham on the general bylaw.
So we will need, we need that information to know whether or not a waiver is even necessary.
Right.
Those are sort of the, you know, the list of design comments. I have another list, I think we, it's worth noting them and getting some of your preliminary feedback on them, but I think they will likely be discussed in more detail when Jeff Dirk's available, and the applicant's traffic engineer next week. So, we've talked a little bit about school bus stops for the development, where they might be sighted, whether there's safe refuge for school-aged children as they wait for the bus. We've covered a bit about the presently proposed four-foot-wide sidewalks, there's recommendations from the planning board, the board's civil engineer, the board's traffic engineer, to increase those to five feet. I, I think, I don't know if the board echoes that request?
I do. Yes, I, I mean, we've heard the safety issues, the safety concerns with respect to the proposed sidewalks, and I think the board agrees that those need to be addressed and improved by the applicant, and that five-foot sidewalks would be preferable.
Similarly, we currently see 20-foot-wide access roads interior to the site, and we have recommendations from the planning board, the board's civil engineer, and traffic engineer, as well as the chief of police, I believe, to increase those to 24 feet in width.
And again, those concerns, I think you've heard members of the board before echo, and I would reiterate that we, we believe that the 20-foot access roads need to be improved.
And what triggers it is the size of the development.
Yeah.
The size of the development, in particular now that there's the potential for cut-through traffic from High Street to Ward Street, that there's expected to be more traffic on the road. And we've mentioned that there's additional information we need about the load rating of the proposed soil absorption system under Road B to accommodate the Town of Hingham fire apparatus. Finally, I'll just note that Attorney Baker's letter of February 1st referenced comments or plans that abutters to the development have, specifically 42 and 48 Autumn Circle, to install vegetative screening to maintain their privacy from the proposed development, and his letter suggests that Section 4C7 of the zoning bylaw, which addresses corner lots and clearance, would prohibit the installation of, of that screening. You know, I would invite the board to comment on it, but I believe that section of the bylaw refers specifically to corner streets, which would, excuse me, corner lots, which would have frontage on two streets, and I do not believe 42 or 48 have frontage on two streets as defined, as the term "street" is defined in the zoning bylaw, so I don't know that that's, that's relevant. We just, this evening, saw the comment letter from Jeffrey Dirk, and in the body of his message forwarding those comments that was sent to you, Brian, this afternoon, he suggests that if those areas fall within the site triangle area for the entrance to the site, that the applicant should attain an easement to, to limit any obstructions to safe-site distances from the site.
One second, I just want to review the February 1st letter.
The last page, I believe.
Right. So, the section of the bylaw, 4C7, says, "A corner lot and any other lot abutting a street in more than one location shall maintain front yard setback requirements for each and every street."
And then goes on to say that, "Within a certain area, from that intersection, no building, structure, wall, fence, planting, or other feature that would interfere with a clear and unobstructive view across the corner shall be maintained between a height of two and a half feet and a height of eight feet above the plane through their curb grades."
Right.
So, I mean, it's a, it's a technical issue, I'm not advising anybody to plant or not plant, simply saying that I don't know that this section of the bylaw would prohibit anybody from doing that, absent an easement, as Jeff Dirk recommended.
Is Attorney Delisi here? No, okay. Okay, let's move on from that.
That's all I have.
We should talk about the, the cut-through and the access, did you have that on your list?
I, I assumed we'd be talking a bit more about that at the next meeting, but you're welcome to offer preliminary feedback.
I think we should wait till we have the traffic engineers.
Well, I just want to give Ray the chance to voice his concerns.
So, the, the Autumn Circle cut-through, that plan came about after a year, when, after they heard the testimony from the police and fire about traffics, and, and I think the first traffic, safety engineers. So, they came in after, after the lawsuit, or whatever it was, and they said, "Oh, we're going to go 32 units, and, oh, we're going to have a cut-through," so they, like, increased their, their impact on the neighbors with that move. I would consider saying, you know, you can't, you can't use a cut-through. I mean, you drive down Autumn Circle, it's narrow, so we're going to require them to open Autumn Circle to 24 feet and put sidewalks, can you even do that? You know, it's just open up a can of worms.
And part of the...
That's my opinion on that.
Part of the discussion about that is whether or not there are, they have rights to access that through an easement. And I believe the, you know, the issues come up, whether or not that's something that we are going to arbitrate or not. And I vindicated that, I don't think we want to arbitrate it, but I think we should have, at least in the record, what the basis is of the applicant's belief that they could actually do that access. Have you submitted anything, has the applicant submitted anything, at least in the record that says, "Hey, here's what we got," not asking us to decide it, but at least we have it in the record?
Outside of the plans, and my testimony on a number of hearings, I have avoided, I think the first time the issue came up, I asked the board what, whether I should respond, and the question is, first, we're going to go to town council, then the second question was, we were talking about whether or not that aspect would be handled by a condition of required access in the plan itself. You did ask me that question, that didn't mean you said it was going to be done, but you asked me the question. And so therefore, and, and I think last time, I also indicated all the indicia of why we were able to do it, deed, issues, plan, descriptions, right-of-way, repeated, all of those things. I do indicate, obviously, that the board, there are cases that deal with this question about access, and there is one HAC case, for example, that indicates that the assertion of prescriptive rights, which is, you know, adverse possession, was sufficient for purposes of the 40B in terms of that access. We have a heck of a lot more than that. Now, is, if the board, is the board asking for me to give a better definition of why we have a colorable title to that?
Yes, so, in other words, you have spoken about certain deeds, for example, but we, we actually don't have those in the record, so, to the extent that you're going to say, "Here's the five reasons," and it's now part of what we've got, so that at least you've made a prima facie showing that here is the basis. We may not agree, others may not agree, but at least you've got it in the record. But, yeah, that would be my request, that we, we get that in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Making a note.
You want to cover anything else?
I'm good for tonight.
Susan, other issues for this evening?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We have several members of the public here.
Please do.
This is an opportunity for comments or questions, and then, after that, I'm going to go over some schedule items. Anyone, yes, sir?
Nope, sorry.
Now, just because we're being recorded, if you don't mind coming up to the mic.
Yeah, folks at home can't hear you, so.
Two lanes on this new, this proposed road from Ward to Autumn Circle, you're going to make that two lanes? Did I just hear a comment to that, official?
It's a two-way roadway, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My name is Kelly Moore, I live at 4 Autumn Circle. My question is, if they are going to connect, how does that impact our neighborhood? Are you going to then put sidewalks in our neighborhood, and how is that possible? Our street is named Autumn Circle, we have trees lined on our, on our, on our properties, so that means you're going to have to cut down the trees to then put the sidewalks in to make our neighborhood safe? Their neighborhood would be safe, but what about ours?
So the issue you're raising is safety, if there's a cut-through?
Absolutely. I have to walk on the street up to get my daughter from, my, both my daughters from the school bus. The other point is, I have the youngest daughter, youngest kid on the street, my girls have grown up riding their bikes on that street, and my youngest hasn't learned how to ride a bike yet, I'd like her to be able to do that.
Anyone else right now?
My name is Eleanor Hickey, and I live at 5 Autumn Circle, and I have a question that Joe Freeman brought up previously, I'd like to know how many lofts have been proposed in this development? I know we have 90 bedrooms. The reason I'm asking is I'm concerned about Aquarian, because I've actually spoken to Aquarian. My understanding is that there is going to be a real issue around the capacity to meet the needs for the water, which could impact our water pressure, so if we increase the bedrooms with lofts by another 30 percent, if there's 32 units, that's substantial. That also impacts the septic system, which is questionable.
Yes, exactly right.
Thanks.
Hi, Graham Madison, 12 Autumn Circle. Just a clarification, how many of the units right now are affordable?
What is the count at this point?
Were you moving around on bedrooms and things like that before? Has that been declared?
I, yes, when we submitted our, our revisions, we restated, stated that, I believe the number is eight, 25 percent.
That is...
Yes.
Thank you. I mean, looking at the Mass Housing Letter that, that did state that it could be no fewer than nine, but it... that it could be no fewer than nine, but it did lay out a number of things that, you know, there's clear, as you mentioned, that there are more unknowns than knowns at this point in the project. And, you know, the concerns over environment, traffic, and safety. I guess my question is, you know, here we are in this process. We're well over two years into it. Yes, there was the extension period, but, you know, the attorney for the applicant was very confident that they would get that, and certainly made a comment towards that at their first restart hearing. So, you'd think they would have kept going with it. I mean, I would if I were developing the project, wanting to get it through, wanting to make it consistent with the needs of Hingham. At what point in this process do we, does this stop? And I ask the question in terms of respectfully, and I know you're all putting your time in, and we are as well, but it feels like every time we get here, it's another laundry list of, well, asking for this. We either don't get it, we get it incomplete, we're told that's not required, that's the bare minimum. I mean, at a certain point, isn't this, isn't it incumbent upon the developer to make sure this is consistent with the needs of Hingham? And to that extent, is that something that will be, when does that get provided, I guess?
Well, to the extent that there is information that is not available, has not been made available, that will impact the type of decision they get from this board. And there will be an endpoint. We are going to be reaching a decision. We've got a schedule established, and I'm going to actually go over some issues with the schedule after these questions. But, we cannot, we cannot force the applicant to provide information. We can simply require it, and if it's not provided, we act appropriately.
And in terms of the appropriateness for the community or fitting in and whatnot, I mean, that was one of the concerns. You know, these are 20, or 32, 2,000 to 2,300 square foot townhouses, which are bigger than any of the other houses in the surrounding area, on a much smaller footprint. It just, I mean, it just doesn't seem to fit in. I guess the question is, who's, is the onus on we as residents of the town and taxpayers, or is it on the developer to show that it fits?
It's, the onus is really going to be in this board to make the determination, and to weigh what's appropriate for the community, and ultimately reach a decision on that.
And that's where you're relying on the information from the developer?
As well as, as well as the information we're getting from you.
Yeah, and it's process, I mean, having followed the Avalon and the other ones, you know, processes that were wrapped up within a year. You know, and here we are, still.
Yep.
Different proposal.
Different size, but you'd think a smaller, but, in any event, thank you very much.
Everyone's different.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joyce Bethany. I live at 23 Autumn Circle.
All of Autumn Circle here? It seems like we can go. Okay. Please, continue.
I have two questions. The first question is, it has to do with the ownership of Viking Lane. Do you have a deed specifying who owns Viking Lane? I bring that up because earlier on, there was an issue of, you know, who own, you know, the, was, does the applicant own the land, or does his father own it, or who owns it? Do you have a deed-
Do we have that?
-to that effect?
Susan?
Well, the way I'm going to answer that is, they needed to demonstrate site control, whether that was ownership or purchase and sale agreement for the subsidizing agency, which is Mass Housing. Mass Housing has determined that they have the appropriate site control, and the board does not have the authority to question that. So, they have received a letter, as the prior gentleman referenced, from subsidizing agency, Mass Housing, that set forth that they have control of the land, and the board is required by law to rely on that.
Okay. Great. Second, second point I want to clarify. As far as the, oh gee, I just lost my thought. My heart is going a mile a minute up here. Let's see.
We can actually go on and then have you come back up.
Yeah, would you do that? Because I got to recollect my thoughts here. Thank you.
Steve Kay, 11 Autumn Circle, for now. I was trying to figure an analogy of the increased traffic on Autumn Circle. Something, I'm looking around this room here, and if everybody could just do me a favor, just stand up for one second. God forbid somebody had a heart attack, and we all had a rush out of one door to get out of here, sprinkling some kids amongst all of us, and what would, you know, that's, that would be the safety issue of Autumn Circle.
Please.
Dennis Lynch, 10 Autumn Circle. To elaborate on that, I presented pictures to the board in a letter.
Yep.
We've had, above and beyond average conditions, the blizzard, the snow in 2015, one car could pass. If two cars passed, you have to go into a clear driveway to get by. How do you get an ambulance down? How do you get fire apparatus? How do you do it in this dense development if there's a fire in there that will engulf the whole neighborhood? Safety.
Yes. Speaking of safety, I noticed we have the chief of police here. Do you have any comments you wanted to make? Well, I'll be arrested if you don't get up there.
Chief of Police, Hingham, Glenn Olson. I think my concerns have pretty much been addressed by the board, but, you know, I really am concerned about the connection of the two roads and the impact it has. And, you know, we're trying to provide safety in one, and now, all of a sudden, two years later, we're now changing the dynamics. And I was a little bit distressed when I saw this, because, you know, so much had been talked about. Now, we're creating an impact on a whole additional neighborhood that is in this transitional period, like all neighborhoods go through, that it's basically filled with kids right now. I know neighborhoods do that, and right now, my concern is, because I, it's only going to be a matter of time before residents figure out, I can avoid a crummy intersection and cut through here to get to there. And we need to do stuff and prevent injuries and tragedies there, just to make sure. And so, anything that happens here, I feel that we have to have improvements to the interior of Autumn Circle somehow to prevent, if this was to go through, that they would need safety issues. They would need sidewalks. You'd have to cut down trees. You want to, I mean, a tree, to me, is not worth the safety of a child. So, there's going to be definite additional impact to these neighborhoods that they didn't see before. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I just know, we have to confirm it, but my assumption is that most of the trees that would be affected are street trees, which are subject to State Tree Act, so, Shade Tree Act.
Right.
So, there's also that issue, because you'd have to follow the Shade Tree Act, the State Shade Tree Act, in order to even deal with that issue.
Right. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. To echo a couple of things that have been said, if you've ever driven down Autumn Circle, you come down, and you come down the hill. On both sides of the street are telephone poles, a big electrical power line. So, to put a sidewalk in, you'd have to go around telephone poles, remove telephone poles. I'd be concerned with how wide these sidewalks are, if there's a telephone pole right in the middle, and what the safety is. Additionally, I live down where that extra 95 feet would be pouring in. Earlier this year, it's raining. It's actually not raining that bad, but it was a very windy day. It was in the fall. A lot of leaves came down. It clogged four drains, including the one in front of my house. Water was into the middle of the circle. Unfortunately, I didn't take a picture at the time, because I had to get the water out of my basement and clean out all the drains first. I wish I had taken a picture. All of that water comes down that hill, and it comes to our side of the circle there. If you go out into the woods right behind, where it's supposed to drain out, I don't think that drainage is actually flowing in the right direction. Half the time, there's trees down across there. It is completely jammed. It overflows into other sections of the woods, into neighbors' backyards. More water coming down into that end of the circle will probably ruin all of the houses on that end of the circle. Thank you.
Got it. Okay.
Can I make more comments?
Sure, sure.
One of the things, Eleanor Hickey, 5 Autumn Circle, one of my concerns is the fact that the plan doesn't show the driveways on Autumn Circle. So, we're talking about safety. We're talking about fire trucks, people trying to get out of the neighborhood. There, there's nothing on the plan that shows the actual driveways on Autumn Circle. And I've lived in my home for 25 years, and this plan is absolutely reckless. It's thoughtless and not providing detail to the board and to the actual residents is, it's absolutely appalling, and it's disgraceful, and it's not in the spirit or the statute of 40B. Eight affordable units, and look at the people in this room.
Hi, Rebecca Shambada, 104 Ward Street. About the septic system, and say, it gets approved, and it's built great, you know, for a year, who maintains that? Is it like a condo association? Because condo, I've been a part of that before in Boston. It's really hard to get money to pay for something like that and so forth. Do you know how those work, and who's responsible? Because I go well.
Well, maintenance of that is, in fact, something that we would be conditioning, to make sure that it is maintained.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm back.
Okay. Have you collected your thoughts?
I have.
Okay, great.
Somewhat. The last meeting, I brought up an issue of deeds. And I have here, and I would like to respectfully submit them to you, the deed to my property, my neighbor's property, and the previous owner to her property. And in those deeds, there is no mention made of any sort of right given to Viking Lane. And that's, that's the basis of, you know, and I just hope that if it came down to a question of law or legality, who is going to have to fund any kind of a lawsuit? Who's, who is, who does the burden of proof fall on? The board, or us private citizens?
That's a good question. You have an answer for that, Susan?
Hi. The issue is that they're claiming rights over private property, not over town land. So, it's really, it's a, it's a private property issue. It's, they're claiming they have rights, and you and your neighbor are saying they don't have the rights. And the town is not a party to private property disputes. So, it is, I mean, there may be, depending on what happens with the permit, there, you know, the board may impose some conditions, they may appeal conditions, and the town-
Pays that.
-has to defend that. But if it's just between all private property owners, separate from the permit, then it's the, it's the private property owners.
But is, is their claim part of their application now?
I'm sorry, what claim?
The, the claim that they can use this drainage easement as a road access. Isn't that part of their application now to, to the board?
They're representing that they have a right of way, not just a drainage easement. This is what they're representing. I'm not saying-
By instinct.
Okay. They're representing that they have the legal right to turn that 40-foot-wide area into a roadway to connect to their development. That's what they're claiming. And I believe, and the chairman said that, you know, if the board was to consider a permit for this project, there would be conditions related to having to, you know, it being conditioned on them, being able to establish that those are actual rights that they can exercise. Because if the, if the project can only happen with it, and they can't build it, build it, then they would not be able to proceed with any permit they were issued. Does that make sense?
But I guess what I'm confused at is, like, in Attorney Baker's letter, he said, and I'm reading from his letter, we have long, he mentioned Meadowbrook Estates Ventures LLC, Virtuous Amesbury Board of Appeals. And he says, let's see. "We have long held," this is quote, "we have long held that even where not simply access, but actual control of the site is at issue, the developer need only establish a colorable claim of title. And that adjudication of complex title disputes or similar matters are best left to the expertise of the courts."
Right.
So, colorable, which I looked up in a law dictionary, is a semblance of title. Colorable is, you know, it's not real. It's an appearance of being real. So, what, my question is, what does this imply? What does this statement imply? That, you know, if I'm saying it's something, and the board doesn't have any right to say, "No, you're wrong," where does it go from there?
Right. So, what they're saying is, so, what this case is saying is, if they establish a colorable claim of title, I think the board has to make that determination, that they've established a colorable claim of title, then the, if there's a dispute about it, it has to go to the court. So, they're basically saying what I said, which is, if there is a dispute, whether they actually have those rights, it's going to have to get settled in a lawsuit.
So, the board has no jurisdiction over, over that, your board?
No, we asked them for the information.
Right. So, to, to the extent that they actually, that anyone, the applicant or anyone else, does something that trespasses on your land, that, that is something that you would be taking up, or any property owner would be taking up on their own. To the extent that they need access in order to get a building permit, or in order to proceed, it's going to implicate this, this permit. The decision that you're referring to, as you can tell, doesn't say that if they do a colorable claim, that's enough. It doesn't get them to do, enable them to do the work. It just enables them to be proceeding in a 40B matter. But it doesn't resolve it. I know your, your concern is that if there's a dispute, you don't want to be the only one reaching into your pocket to try to fund it. And we, I'm sensitive to that concern, and I think the town and this board will make sure that there are conditions appropriate for them, so that they will have to establish certain things in order to, to proceed. But ultimately, if, if they trespass on your land, it is a private dispute, as Susan was saying, and it's something that you would be responsible for.
So, do I understand correctly that you will do everything in your purview to hopefully prevent a lawsuit from happening if-
I'm not going to go that far. I don't know if I can prevent a lawsuit from happening, but I think-
No, well, I guess, let me-
We're going to do everything in our, that we, that we can to make sure that the record is clear, so that however things proceed-
Okay.
-it will be in, in-
Following.
It'd be something that could be resolved, hopefully, in a clear manner.
Thank you. May I?
Please. You can give that to Emily. That'd be great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You have asked that we submit something to the board with regard to the issue, and I appreciate her concern. What I will do is just sort of add to it, because we're running around the question in many ways. I have a copy of Ms. Mullins' deed. It says, "This conveys-" It says, "This conveyance is subject to and with the benefit of right of way and drainage easement set forth in a deed of Hingham Estates to Lawrence Pickard at UX, July 31, 1961, and recorded in the public registry of deeds, subject to and the benefit of easements and rights of way shown on the first mentioned plan, Plan on Autumn Circle, recorded at blank, blank, and blank." That is the right of way of which we speak. I then go back to Pickard, which is her predecessor in title. It says, "Subject to a right of way over a strip of land 40 feet wide, as shown on a plan extending Autumn Circle to the land of Viking Realty. Shown on said plan, one half of the strip being part of Lot 13 and the plan on the other half being on Lot 14 heretofore mentioned." That's a right of way referenced in your deed, 40 feet to our property. It is also referenced in the plans, it's also referenced in the taking. But we will be submitting something to the board.
May I, I'm sorry, I came up without being recognized, but may I just ask the book and page of that deed?
Pickard's deed is, let me see, is Book 2871, page 435. And subsequent deeds, your deed and to you is page, excuse me, Book 8538, page 151.
So what was it that you were just reading from the Pickards, please?
That is, the predecessor in title took subject to a right of way to, from the Autumn Circle to our property, over your land.
Well, all right. It comes down to submit, it says, it says, "One half of said, let's see, said plan extending from Autumn Circle to land of Viking Lane Realty, as shown on said plan, one half of said strip being part of Lot 13." Is that what you're, is that what you did?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you.
I assume you've got, this is not your only copy that you're giving us?
No.
Okay.
I have another one in the back.
Yes.
Kelly Moore, 4 Autumn Circle. So if that's true and there is a connection made, who's going to pay for the sidewalks? Who's going to pay for cutting down the trees?
I just, we just brought that up as something that might happen, but the applicant would have to pay for it.
And nobody said that it was true.
Okay. Well, I'm saying if it is.
Bringing it up as a talk.
If it gets to that point.
So Ms. Bethany has made her position known, Attorney DeLisi has made his position known, Mr. Baker has made his position known, there is two different opinions.
Correct.
Right, so we understand that your question is hypothetical, if it has to happen?
Yes.
And so part of resolving that if question will in fact determine the funding.
Just one quick question, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Kelly Killian from CHA Consulting here for the neighborhood. Just one quick question on the Viking Lane and the extension through. I know we've been beating this around quite a bit, but is that intended to be a public way or?
Is what intended to be a public way?
The connection, the connection and from Ward Street to Autumn Circle. There is no way, there's a road shown, there's a 20-foot road, there is no way beyond that. Is it going to be an easement through there? How does the public get from one side to the other? Because they won't have the permission, right? Unless you specifically grant it to them.
I'm still not following your question.
Just because they show.
Let me state, you're stating that Autumn Circle's public.
Correct. Viking Lane is private.
Viking Lane is private.
Correct.
This right of way is private, it's not part of the Autumn Circle layout.
Correct. There is no layout.
So his quest, I think I understand, he's saying is, how would the public use it as a cut through if it's a private way and they have no rights to use the private way? Is that the question you asked?
Correct. Is the public going to be granted access through the project or is there going to be a layout of the road? You only have 20 feet of pavement, there is no layout of a road. You start off Viking Lane with a 40-foot width, you have Autumn Lane as a public way. So if it's not a public way, how would you plow it? How would the school bus go up it?
That's right.
Right. I mean, a way cannot become public without a town meeting vote, so that's not something that could happen as part of this permit.
And there'd be no layout.
Right. It would have to, there would have to be a layout adopted by the Board of Selectmen and there's a state law process for public ways.
So if that's the case, does that affect all the setbacks as well?
That I.
I know.
So now all your front setbacks are different, variances, or the waivers they're looking for or seeking relief from, but now are they asking, going to have to ultimately ask for some relief from the front yard setback as well? I just asked a question.
Right. I would say that the DPW would not allow snow from a private way to be pushed into the public right of way, so it wouldn't be able to go in that direction. It wouldn't be able to go onto Ward Street or Autumn Circle, for example, the snow. So that would have to get dealt with.
Even the maintenance of the roads because it's not a public way?
Right.
So would there be a barrier between the two?
I don't think there could be a barrier because that would defeat the purpose of having the access.
So are they trespassing?
It's a good question.
I'm not trying to be cute, I'm just asking the question.
It's a good question.
Do they have the legal right to pass?
I'm sure it happens in other.
They may not grant it, but people are going to do it anyway.
People are going to do it.
Dennis Ledge, 10 Autumn Circle. Is this road intended for emergency egress or public traffic or traffic from the proposed project? And is this a, is this demanded by the town? Because I've already gotten this answer from Mr. Baker.
What answer have you gotten?
That the town is demanding this.
So.
I would.
Explain how that came about.
Yeah, well, the public safety, and I'm not sure where the other comments.
If anybody asks a question.
The project of this size necessitates a second means of egress. The applicant chose where to put that second means of egress.
It could have gone.
So Autumn Circle is not necessarily the only place that the second means of egress could have been, that's what they chose.
My question is that egress that was requested for the project?
Yes.
For essential emergency vehicles?
Yes.
For public traffic to open up into our street?
It's for emergency.
Emergency.
So by them opening it up to public traffic is solely their choice?
Yes.
Nice choice.
Yep.
Public traffic, Jim Campbell, Autumn Circle 15. Public traffic coming up Ward can take the cut through Autumn Circle, not just the residents of the development, both ways. Do I understand that?
No, so.
Well, we're speculating here.
Right. No one is saying that those actions are allowed. People are observing that that is likely to happen. So I'm not sure what your question is.
Traffic off of Ward.
Yes.
The addresses of the housing is going to be in Ward.
Yes.
Just the residents on Ward take the access only, not the people from two streets over coming down and cutting, taking that cut through Autumn Circle. That's my question. Is this going to be a traffic? I mean, we need highway rails on the side to get the traffic through. Is that what I'm saying? Rush hour?
I see what you're saying. So you're raising the issues that this will create. It's not a question of necessarily what the permission is, but actually what's going to happen.
Yeah. So it is open. If it's approved, then anybody on High Street going either way can come in this way if they have to, to go up to High through Autumn Circle.
I think physically they would be able to, legally they might not be allowed to, but they, that doesn't necessarily stop people. I think that's what the answer has been to that.
Yes.
If it's a private way, legally they may not have the right to cut through, but they may do it anyway. It happens in at least one other location in the town.
Right. So you're familiar with where the.
West Street.
Where Stop &amp; Shop is?
I was just going to bring.
Yeah. But it also happens up on West Street.
Yeah, so it's an issue that the town has seen before.
But there's a cut through between Ward Street and Lincoln Street through Stop &amp; Shop parking lot.
Right. Okay, so let's talk about schedule. We currently have a meeting scheduled, today is the 6th, we have a meeting scheduled a week from today. I'm going to go over schedules right now. A week from today, which is the 13th. And I want to ask my fellow board members, two weeks from 13th, which is the 27th.
I have that date nailed open, so.
I think, do you have a?
Is that an after holiday week?
No, so the President's Day week is the 19th.
School holiday week.
I think that was.
27th, yeah.
Okay, right. So we already had continued this hearing, and we'll do it again, from today to the 13th.
At 6:30, is that right?
Right. And for the 13th, hearing is going to be 6:30. And then I'm suggesting that we have a follow-up meeting on the 27th at 7:00 PM. And at the meeting on the 27th, this board, I think, should be prepared to be informing the applicant what the conditions are going to be associated with the permit. And in that regard, I would ask members of the public, to the extent that you are looking to provide input as to conditions for this application, you should send your suggested conditions in to Emily at the zoning board office so that the board has time to consider them prior to the meeting of the 27th, when we hopefully will be in a position to inform the applicant what the conditions would be. So today is the 6th. So Emily, what would be an appropriate deadline to give to members of the public to get you comments?
Ideally by the 20th, not earlier.
Right. So two weeks from this evening, which is the 20th. This is not a requirement, it's a request to members of the public. If you would do your best to get to this board, your suggestions for conditions, which does not mean that you think that the application should go through. What it means is, if the application has to proceed, what would you suggest we require to minimize the negative impacts that you see and to address them? I assume everyone has Emily's email address, or you can drop it by hand to the zoning board. It goes untied over there. And again, we'd ask that you get it to us by the 20th so we have time to review it, incorporate it. And then at the meeting on the 27th, I would anticipate that we should be providing our suggested conditions to the applicant. There was one other person who raised their hand that I did not recognize, so please.
Gabrielle Macedo, 48 Ward Street. So you had said earlier that the snow from the private way wouldn't be able to be pushed onto Ward Street or Viking Lane, so my question was just where would that be located to?
So that's a great question, and part of what the applicant's responsibility is, is to show us exactly how snow will be stored, to the extent it needs to be. And that will be shown on the plans.
Right. And they have done that on the landscaping plans, they have indicated some areas on the site.
Emily, anything else for this evening? Susan?
I just asked for clarification, so you're asked the public, I assume, Pat Brennan, the consultants as well, is that right? I mean, you didn't direct your comment to Pat. But, so I guess I'm just wondering what the, are there instructions then for Emily and /or myself as far as what you are looking for for the 27th?
What we're looking for for the 27th is to have a set of draft conditions that we could present.
So like I said, that Emily would present you as the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
And yes, my assumption has been that Emily will communicate to our retained experts to make sure that she's got their input. And to a large extent, it's already been received into the public record, but additional recommendations need to be submitted. We should get them so we are in a position on the 27th to review with the applicant what conditions we would expect to impose. Did you have anything else, sir?
The only thing is just a point of clarification for next week. We are intending to have our traffic consultant here. I think the board is intending also for that discussion to be.
Yes. Do we know, is he available?
Yep.
Okay, great.
6:30.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, great.
So, hold on a second. So we have letters from our consultants, Vanessa and Amory dated February 6th.
Yep.
And the applicant's, Mackenzie Engineering, had a letter dated, which we talked about, February 2nd. So our two engineers have already reviewed that and thank you for reviewing that quickly in a week or so, less than a week. So now, Mr. Mackenzie, is he going to have time to review these, these letters again and get us something before next week?
Our intention, okay, is, yes, to make sure that he has reviewed that so that he can comment on that with his appearance next week. I don't know his schedule, I don't know if he's in town or out of town, but I will, yeah, we would like to also complete the issue of response as promptly as possible.
Thank you. Was someone else in the back, I think, who had a question? Someone over there? No?
Over here. There's someone over here.
Yes.
My name is Robert Friedman, I'm at 13 Autumn Circle. And I have a question for you, Mr. Baker.
So if you could address your questions to us, please.
Okay. Well, it's a question regarding the right of way.
Yes.
And the question is, is there a deed that grants a right of way? There's apparently two deeds that retain a right of way, but is there a deed that grants a right of way? A deed can say anything it wants in there and it doesn't have to be true, I've seen that.
That is an excellent question. And that's something that we've looked at as well. And that's one of the reasons that I asked the applicant to submit to the board whatever they would like to, to demonstrate in fact that they do have these rights.
Because I don't understand why.
That's an excellent point, yes. Thank you, sir. Anything else that we need to cover, Emily? I will entertain, I would move, so, let's go, so I would entertain a motion that we adjourn and continue this hearing to the 13th at 6:30 PM. And then following that, there'll be another hearing on the 27th of February at 17.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.